So is that related to that too, or is this?
Sixty three thousand one fifty eight and ten cents. Tiffany, sorry. Sixty three thousand one fifty eight and ten cents. So that's.
Okay, thanks.
Is the amount we're donating? Oh, I got you, I got you. All right, we'll call this means order. She's passing down the real call sheet where we are. I want to motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Go to the same side. Any comments from the floor? If not, we'll move right into the finance for the bank transfer proposal.
This is over First National, right?
Uh, we had, well, we had the two different banks talk to us, so.
Before we start going, I want to clear something up that I know at least one of you.
Good, it's probably the question I was asking for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where the confusion came from really on. Um, I know sometimes I'm not the clear speaker, I don't talk very well and stuff. Um, but. Back in October and November, I came to the board or committee meeting and said, John Rome's approached me from Prairie State Bank. Um, we're working together to see what we can do to grow revenues. And nobody had a problem, but nobody gave issue, nobody gave me any other direction, nothing. Okay? I told John, let's wait, get through the holidays, through the new year, taxes and all that stuff. And then we're going to come to the board with these rates. John came to the meeting, presented, had the same meeting, the committee meeting. I specifically said to the board that John gave these rates, you know, and there was no other, not any other bank. But so I don't know where that came from, um, that I was supposed to contact other banks. I was never asked to do that, I was never told to do that, um, I never said I did that. I did say, when we talked about, um, requests for proposals on the school road, um, because that's standard, I mean, we, we have to send out and ask for RFPs, you know, to get these, when we look at bonds and loans and all that. Um, so of course I did that, you know, we, we took care of that with the lawyer that we needed to and all that. Um, but that was a totally separate issue. That had nothing to do with our interest rates and our revenues. Um, so I'm a little just hardened to find, you know, when we're talking in open meetings that I should have done this, or I shouldn't have done that. Um, and I'm not here to defend myself. And then also when our bank comes to me and says that, um, I think it's dangerous and I think it's a little irresponsible and embarrassing, um, to tell someone that's our banker that I should have done something, or they're disappointed that I didn't do something, um, when I was never directed to do it, you know, and I work with these people on a fairly decent basis and it says a lot about our community, you know, that your treasurer knows what they're doing, you know? Um, so I would, I would ask that you're careful, you know, when you, when you address these businesses and, um, take that into account because then I know of, I've not, not done anything that I should have.
Well, you know, I, I haven't looked back to pull the agenda, because I remember you talking to us, but I'm just going to tell you what my recollection was, was a kind of a blanket statement from you, and this is just my memory, that, um, and I don't believe we gave you any directive, because I do remember Mr. Rome coming and, so that was great, nobody had a problem with that. But somewhere there's a piece of it that I remember that we were going to, and I don't know who was supposed to, um, make sure other banks knew about this so they could put in something. And then I heard something about a deadline, again, I don't have documentation. And we remember something about a deadline, but I don't, I, I don't have my notes Tiffany, so I mean, you know, I trust everything you say. And, um, you're always a consummate professional, so that's not my issue. It's just, the other night when the bank, South Jacksonville Bank came and presented, I was still thinking in my head, I'm like, well, why are they presenting if there was a deadline, they missed the deadline, because that's the way I'm thinking. So if there's a deadline, it should go to John Rome's bank, because if there was a deadline, they met the deadline, if they were the only one, we should go with them.
And I'll tell you how that happened, there was no deadline. There was never any talk of moving the deadline. Um, Barb Baker called me the morning of the last board meeting and said, I had, I don't know if it was her or one of our employees, um, heard that there was talk of moving our funds. And did it affect any of their funds? And I said, the funds that we have to them. And I said, actually, yes, the two of them count as one of them that we're looking at. And she said, what can we do? So, I said, well, they, they think of one, but, um, you're welcome to submit something also, and if you are serious about this, I would recommend going to the board, asking them to table it, and go from there.
And I think that was a perfect way to handle it. I mean, I don't have any problem with that.
Right, but then I hear that she, that someone sent to her, I don't know why she didn't come ask you for proposals, you know, like, it makes it look like I'm supposed to, you know? Like, um, and that wasn't the case, you know?
Well, and I said to her, I was surprised, because I know Barb, and I said, I'm surprised you guys missed a deadline. And she said, I didn't know anything about a deadline. And I said, okay, well then, and I could be mistaken.
There was no deadline.
But I think Dick had thought there was a deadline possibly, and things he had. But none of us can remember the exact.
I would welcome you to walk into the audio then, because I.
Oh, and I'm not saying we didn't misinterpret it, because we certainly could have. I just want to make sure if we had promised, if there had been a deadline and someone missed it, then I think they're out of the way. That's the way I see it.
Sure.
So that determines the way I'm going to vote. So if you're telling me there was no deadline, then I can entertain both proposals.
There was no deadline, um, and then, yeah, there was, there was no deadline. And that last meeting I would have been at, had there been anything on the agenda that involved you, you know what I mean? But there wasn't, so that's, that's why.
You're in reference to the last committee meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I, like, I was listening to the audio and asked, I said, well, I, I was really wanting her to be here, hoping she would be here or something. Um, and even, you know, like comments like that, right, it makes it look like I'm supposed to be here and I'm not. And I hear stuff like that, and, um.
Well, then I think I probably misinterpreted it, and I apologize if, you know, I, I think I've always said to you, I think you're extremely professional. You and I don't always agree on everything, but you've always treated me professionally, and I appreciate that. And, um, so I don't doubt, if you were given a directive, you would have followed through, aren't I? So I'm not saying we gave you a directive, I don't really remember. I just remember something about a deadline. And I just wanted to make sure that the South Jacksonville Bank did not miss a deadline and then come in in the last minute and want to put in a proposal.
It was just, the other bank, and I say the other bank, the, the one that came in and put in the first proposal, that was simply on their own volition. They, they just came on their own and said, hey, we would like to give you.
John Rome's bank, yes, okay. I think she said that's the only one she's got.
Yeah, and that's why.
Maybe we interpreted it as we had put out for.
And that's why there's no deadline, because we didn't put out for anything. That was simply, bank A coming in saying, hey, we can get you better rates.
That's exactly what it is.
And then once bank B heard that another bank came in to compete for those rates, bank B said, well, hey, can you table that and we would like to put in a competing rate?
Yeah, yeah.
Which, so that's what we're at now.
Right, and I have no problem with that, I just want to make sure there wasn't a deadline and it was misinterpreted, so, I mean, on my end, I can't speak for them. I mean, I don't have any issues with the way you handled anything. I think I misinterpreted, somewhere in my mind I got deadlines, and I'm not saying you ever said that directly, so please accept my apology as that, you know, that's never my intention.
I just want to make really certain and clear, and I don't want to kick a dead horse, you know, but at the same time, which we've got to take care of this, and it is revenue growing, and, um, when it was, when there was talk that, you know, I should have made a call, but I was freaking out. If on my own I just started calling banks saying, what kind of rate can you give me, you know? These are long-term relationships, you know, you can go through. You know, so that's where this is kind of wrong, that's where it's unclear on that, we're good and.
Sure.
You know, because we're dealing with big money here, you know?
So do you mind going over it again, in a nutshell?
It's the same rates. If you want to be just two rates on that one. But on the one page that changed, John Rome did go ahead and submit that, if you're going to entertain First National Bank, that's how the order will change. If you're not going to entertain First National Bank, it's exactly the same as what he presented.
Okay.
Okay, this is where First National Bank presented, then, okay. First National Bank wants to do the tourism fund, change the interest rate, which is what our other accounts with them are at. And I asked them then to submit a payment showing what that was the rate event for the last year. So you can see what the rate, what rate that whatever you're setting on, had it any map. Because it's currently, you know, it's two percent, I don't know. But you can see that's the highest it's been. And so it doesn't, I, it's not, that is probably the new one, I'm just saying. You deserve to run around the month, and that's your, I don't know whether I'm going to struggle or not. But that's what they want, but they're, they're willing to do it. As far as CDs go, Prairie State Bank is willing to do all our CDs by the, some CDs have two percent for 12 months. First National Bank will go 2.45 percent, but it's thirty months. You may get higher than two, maybe higher than 2.45 in a year. We're just going to lock them in for years, it's something for the board to decide, uh, who do you want to go with? Because we have both offers. Or if you don't want to do anything, you don't have to do anything.
What helped me here, currently we're, where are we at at First National?
This is the six thirty meeting, so come on in.
As far as CDs.
I don't care about the amounts, but where we at interest wise, right now?
Well, three percent, or six percent, nowhere near where we could. But they're like six-month CDs, 12-month CDs, six-month, and, and even the whole one. So it's on page five of the treasurer's report, you can see there what the rates are and what we're getting from them. So I just think we should look at.
Okay, if something happened and we needed to draw this money out, we're not going to lose any of our beginning balance money. I, I'm just saying if we had, I'm using a number, don't want anybody to get shook up, but like 200,000. So if something happened, we had to draw it out in two months, and we're still going to get 200,000 back, they're not going to give us 198,000, a penalty.
I don't know for sure, I know you'll get some kind of penalty, I don't think they'll take the whole thing, but I'd have to check on that for sure. They, they won't tell you, no, you have it.
Right, but I, my own personal feeling is I hate to tie it up for 36 months.
I, I agree with you, but, um.
Does it, we don't know what's going to happen with our new governor and all this other stuff, so.
Well, I'm like, you know, if interest rates are going up to what they are now, you really could have a higher interest rate in a year.
You could have it 15 months from now, could be another percent, it won't be, but it could be another percent.
John did ask me to, with Prairie State Bank, did ask me to reiterate, you know, that he, he still is interested in tourism funds, but he's willing to still offer these other amounts even without that capital, you know?
So where's, where's Prairie State at now? How much are they offering us right now? How much, if we went with them tomorrow, how much would they pay us? What, what is their interest rate?
With the tourism fund, is what you're asking.
I, okay, but.
Do you still have your first original proposal, I think they're on there. They're willing to offer 1.15 percent on that, and that's a fixed rate. So even if it goes, you know what I mean, like there's no floating rate, like, it's just what it would be.
And Prairie State, if we went with them for a year, they would be 2.09?
No.
What with Prairie State?
No, that is Prairie State.
I, I, I'm sorry, I said that wrong, First, First National, what would they be?
There, there's a floating rate. It's currently 2.09, but it floats, and that's the one where I asked them to submit.
Right here, okay. And how long is their floating rate good for?
I mean, that just is the floating rate. That's, they've not put any, put them to it, um.
So it is possible to go down to 1% and they would take us down to 1%?
Possible to go down to half a percent.
Okay.
We'll go up to 4%, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Right. And the only one we're really looking at is the tourism money fund.
Well, you're looking at all of them.
Okay.
Remember, you're still looking at your jungle fund, if you want to move that away from farmers, you're looking at your.
Not farmers first, you mean?
No, I mean farmers.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're still looking at your water sewer security, and then you're still looking at that jungle fund, which I can take these back too. But none of those were controversial. And, and you know, really honestly, my only dog in the hunt is creating revenue. You know what I mean, like there's, I don't, I don't care. I don't know, not that I don't care, but it doesn't matter to me which direction you go, because what you feel is the best you can go.
So me, for me to understand, this is state general savings, and we have 461,000 in there, according to this.
Yeah, I remember these are people that have.
I, I realize that, but we're just going to say that. And the interest rate now is .05, and Prairie would go to 1.15. So we're going to increase that by 50% more interest rate.
Way more.
But at least 50%.
Yeah.
.65, really, okay.
Because like right now, you're getting 200,000 bucks just on that annually, and we'll get 0.5 grand interest on, based on that same number, compared to.
So we're looking at 1.15 versus floating 2.09, is this correct? They're looking at 1.15 versus two, on a floating basis.
Well, and even 12 months ago, from the First National Bank's thing, it was still higher than what Prairie State thing was offering as a fixed thing, so it's not like it, like, was low, 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 and then had like a, you know, a spike in the last three months.
You, you guys understand what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's your thoughts on this?
I would say it was Prairie State puts, um, I don't like the fun of the floating rate or whatever.
The floating would be for a year, though.
They didn't put a time period.
They didn't put a time period.
No, I asked, no, they didn't put a year time, the year came for me, I asked them for a charge showing what that rate has been for the past year, because they were saying that the floating rate is currently 2.09.
And it can fall for down, correct?
Yeah.
See, I don't like that idea, I want to, I mean.
Because if you say 2.09, I wouldn't, you know, it's only been 2.09 for a month, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and the one through Prairie is going to stay that way, correct?
But statistically, every time if the Fed's rate raise the rates they charge, then the savings rates go up with it. So.
Well, yeah.
I, I know where you're coming from, I, I understand that, you know?
First National's could go even higher, right?
Yes.
Yeah, same.
And I feel like it boils down to just how aggressive we want to be, basically.
Can we tell them we want to go on a six-month deal? Is that up to us? With the floating rate?
I don't see why not, I mean, if you said we're looking at the switches though, I mean, I don't think there's anything to watch you in that, you know, revisit.
It's already there, so if you're saying we just want to revisit it in six months, that's key.
And see whether, yeah.
Because we wouldn't be moving anything if we left it, you know?
What are they paying us right now, though? First National, that's what I'm looking at.
It's like .05 percent on the general savings and .15 percent on the.
.2 percent, that's for the two of them. .2 percent.
I mean, either way you cut it.
We're going to get more money.
Big increase. No, that's right, you could take with you, well, there are two up here.
So you said, how aggressive do we want to be, how aggressive do you want to be?
Because, like, because it's a big increase no matter what, I kind of feel like, um, being on the, the fixed, more conservative side is better. I, I would just, it's not like we are relying on the, according to this paper, 483 total dollars we get in interest.
Right.
Uh, but I think it would not be good if we started to bank on, you know, nine grand from Prairie, Prairie State, or what would be a lot more than that from First National, but then if the rates plummet, but we were, you know, banking, you know, nine grand is a lot of money for whatever. And I, I don't feel that that would be responsible in a municipal setting, to be that aggressive with it. Just because it could, because it could drop significantly if the market took a tumble, so that's how I feel.
What do you think, what do you think, Matt?
Well, I agree with that. I'll say to the.
Mark Thor is in this way. What are we like, almost?
Our choice, yeah.
Over six.
Yeah. Six.
Yeah. There is.
Prairie State Bank. First National Bank is my great tourist, but I will tell you Prairie State, they came in so aggressive for our interest rates in that school road project too. I think anything we want to finance, that John Rome would be your guy, with better rates than anybody in town. When you're looking at that too, with what you're looking at, I honestly believe that.
Well, it would be my opinion for them, that, we're not making anything now, basically, I mean, really. Okay, but I think if we moved, leave general checking where it is, just because it would be a thorough pain in the rear to change the, the checking from farmers over to some other bank, and do all the bookkeeping that would be involved, and checks and everything else, but keep it there for a while. Let's do this like three-month or six-month deal and come back and look at it. But take two accounts and give that to Prairie State, and two accounts, give that to First National on the 2% that they're offering. And what I'm looking at is general savings, village acre escrow, water sewer security deposits, and a general fund CD. So in essence, you could take one, being the general savings where the most money is, and take the other three somewhere, because you're not talking, you're talking 250,000 approximately now versus 460,000 in general savings, and going with a very secure there being 1.15, correct? From Prairie Power, or, Prairie Power, I'm sorry, Prairie State, and taking the other quarter man and try it for three months, six months at, at the 2.09.
Well, you can't include the water sewer security deposits in there, because that has to be in a non-interest bearing account, which is why we.
You're ab, well, you're, well, okay, but it's still, you can move it.
And if we talk about moving checking and savings, the different things, you know, make my head spin, there's no way to.
So they need, you're suggesting they stay at the same rate?
Absolutely, whatever rank it is, checking, general checking and savings have to be together.
Okay.
Uh, checking and general checking, what's the difference?
General checking and general savings need to be at the same rate.
Yeah, the first and second in the lines.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want to make your head spin.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else have any proposals?
So Dick, you're saying leave those at farmers, and if she wants both?
If she wants both at farmers, and, so big, because she handles this every day there with that. So that would leave then, this, the sewer security deposit is just a gimme to whoever we decide to give it to. Because you can't make any money off the interest on them. But you're talking about, we're talking about $250,000, and we're talking $150,000 that we're actually going to draw interest on.
And you say, when you're saying farmers, do you mean Prairie State Bank?
I think it's Farmer State Bank.
Farmers is. And that farmers, one thing to do though, too, is that when you're looking at this proposal from Prairie State, you're looking at numbers that these interest rates are based on 1.6 million dollars. You're not basing this on piecemeal, you know what I mean?
I see, okay.
I'm going to give you 30 grand, so you're still going to give me this rate.
They want it all or want nothing.
Yes.
I mean, I would assume so.
That's what they're basing their proposal on.
Yeah, that's what, you've got to think about that.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be willing to go back there if you want me to, but that's how I would submit a proposal, so.
For First National, we'll take anything we can.
Well, they're just asking to retain the tourism. And any future CDs and any other ones. Because they're, they're, they're wanting to hold that, they're interested. And, and you know, maybe you want to hold this over, you know, and not take action. I mean, it's a lot to take in, you know, so.
What's your thoughts, Mayor?
I, I, I hate saying that I don't want to go with a local bank, I really do, but for the tourism, the tourism account, the, uh, the interest rates look awful attractive at Prairie State Bank. Which was the original proposal, just for the, uh, just for the tourism account.
And tourism is not even on this list?
Not on this list there.
It's not on his updated one, because he, he presented this, he emailed and talked to me that he would still be able to present these rates if you're taking that out, because you've got to really so much money, see, so he did, you know, um.
So he's presenting this current page with the understanding, or he's thinking we would keep tourism where it is?
He's hoping that you won't.
Yes, yeah, but this page.
He's willing to still give you these rates on the other ones.
Without tourism.
Right.
Is there any chance First National will raise the tourism, the rate on the tourism?
That's what they came in at, so that's, that's their offer, and, I mean, I say we need it.
But there isn't tourism on it? From First National?
That's, that's what they're looking at, that's for them. Those are the rates that they were giving us on every single other account. So, and for some reason, they had tourism just at 22%, so that's where, that would just fall in all those other accounts. There's no money in those other accounts, not like there is tourism.
Right.
So that's why, yeah.
So tourism would then go up to this 2.09?
Floating rate.
Floating rate, right, then why was it so low?
I don't like that.
Because they could.
I mean, that's what I understand, I guess, is if, because it's not on this list, but I mean, if, if they were all supposed to be the same rate, if you go back to even this, the, the oldest date of January 2014. January two thousand and eighteen, the floating rate was one point three eight, but we were still getting paid.
Point two, correct?
Point two, so.
But we don't know what the original agreement was, do we, for tourism? I wouldn't have a little, yeah. So maybe that was the original agreement, somebody here said, okay.
We're getting paid point two on a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar account that.
Which doesn't make sense to us, but it might have been one point seven.
It doesn't make much sense, no. Well, let's start with just the tourism account, um, just a quick straw poll, like what.
My opinion's move it. If they're only going to pay you two percent, point two, well, we have to be very careful here, but the point two, but if they would pay the at least one point one five, which Prairie would, correct? I assume they would. Or the two point oh nine, if we put it on a floating basis every, every three months, six months, whatever.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to go a long time.
Oh.
But I don't know if they'd agree with that.
Maybe they don't have to revisit it on my own.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
When does that, is it, it's in a CD, right?
No.
No.
It's, it's in the checking account, ain't it?
Well, I.
I'd say move it.
Move it.
Move it.
I'd say move it.
Don't tinker with the.
My thing is.
If I'm raising or lowering it, just move it.
Move it to Prairie State. For the increase in the security.
And then the others revisit in a few months?
I think we ought to come back and visit again in three months, six months, give it a time period on that.
So how about then that will be our action, is to move the tourism from First National Bank to Prairie State Bank and Trust.
And then what about the other accounts, though?
We'll revisit the others in three months.
But they'll still be at point two, correct?
No, they'll, they should be floating now, yep.
All right, that's the only one of First National is tourism, right? The others are Farmers.
That was the only one.
Yes, sir.
Commercial for everyone.
Okay, yes, alright.
I mean, I, Farmers has given us pennies compared to Prairie State, just in the interest. I don't see a reason, honestly, to leave it there either.
I mean, say, if you're going to move it from anywhere, you should move from Farmers, right?
Well, I mean, tourism is.
Well, besides tourism, I'm talking about checking and savings. If you want both at the same one, it doesn't look like we're getting much from Farmers.
You're correct. I, I wasn't paying attention to the rates there, that yes, they're, they're very low as well.
And that one CD hanging out of Jacksonville Savings, I would like to move that only because we have no other ties there now with the.
Absolutely.
With getting out of the fire department and all that, like, yeah, there's no reason to have a hundred thousand dollars there, or nearly.
I agree with that, yeah.
Okay.
And they don't pay very much interest on any of them.
Yeah, because this proposal, the interest is ten times as much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and I, and I, I know we're being recorded, but I'll say this, but if, if I was First National Bank, I would have had a representative here tonight to tell us this. You know, so, and, I'm just me talking. It's my opinion, I'm entitled to it. But they need, they should have been here tonight. Because we, we wasted, we didn't waste anything. We per- or put this off for a month for their benefit, and they're not here tonight.
She did present, I mean, she did give me the form, you know, that I.
But she still, still should have been here tonight. Okay.
I'm not arguing with you.
So what's the proposal you have there, Mayor?
Tourism from First National Bank to Prairie State Bank, CD from Jacksonville Savings Bank to to Prairie State Bank.
Yeah, Prairie State Bank.
And then the, the rest of them, um, the ones here that we're getting paid peanuts on?
With the exception of general checking and savings. Does you want them to stay at Farmers?
No.
No, I just want them to stay together.
Same bank.
Okay, alright, okay, no sweat.
Together, yeah.
So, so the, then the other part, half of this proposal, then instead of just saying the CD, then, I know it's audio, but everything on this page here, on this proposal, will move to Prairie State Bank.
And that's the original proposal, yeah. So it's four of them are Farmers, if I'm reading that right, right? Four accounts from Farmers, one from Jacksonville Savings, and then tourism.
From First National.
From First National to Prairie State.
And, okay, do you have any idea when the CD is, expires?
Which is the original proposal, yeah, so that makes it a little easier, doesn't it?
And if there's a treasurer's report in this?
Yes, yeah.
That saying that you work really hard? Your first one's going to come out quickly, um, so actually, at First National Bank, um, you're going to have two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars on your charter next month. So you're going to want to do this out of, you know, move it to a twelve-month.
Well, I think you need to, you have to at least wait until it expires.
Yeah.
Right now, you're getting a point three percent on it.
But if you, but if you, it's liable to take it all.
Oh, and it's going to come due next month.
That's what I'm saying. So leave it there until it expires and then move.
Do you want me then to move it? Stay, you know what I mean, because I, I mean.
That's what I would say.
Yeah.
I, I would too.
And then after that, you have another one to come, the Jacksonville Savings Bank comes during July.
Okay.
Okay. So you would be moved.
That's up to you. I mean, I can move it now and wait till then.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to wait for that one.
It's a big thing of luck to move these, just so we all.
I, I realize. But I also think we need to revisit this.
Well, no, I just, yeah, I can take a load of what I'm saying, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, that'll be the next one in July. I think we've got two in August that are coming, we've got a hundred from First National.
Hey, I think we need to revisit this in six months, September.
Yeah, that sounds fair.
Well, maybe, yeah, it sounds good. You'll have half of your board then, it'd be good to get another perspective.
They'll be without moving, or?
Even if we move the stuff.
No, we'll revisit again.
Revisit it and see, and, and we may, we may be pleasantly surprised, we may have some, some people hit us and, hit us, but they come to us and.
I just wanted to know the auto, we've got my auto under, so that's why I wanted to make sure.
That's why you want to take them out, yeah.
Dick, the last page of the treasurer's report has a maturity date.
Okay, that's fine.
The old business? Under new business, I just wanted to give the names of the, uh, the resignations. We have Jared Leek that, did he move to downtown? Who's moving out to? Moved, moved to Saguam County, so he's resigning. He's resigning from the fire department, and then, uh, Reed, he's, he got a new job, it's a swing shift, so he's resigning from the fire department.
So you're back to fifteen? Fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, also, Dick, did you want to mention about, since you talked to her for about the Bass tournament?
Okay, there's been a, a big cluster as far as I'm concerned. The Rotary Club came to us a, a month ago, came to us earlier than that, I'm sorry. But we voted on it last February seventh to give them a thousand dollars out of tourism money. The Rotary Club has run an ad in the, um, Facebook, nice big ad and all that. South Jacksonville is not mentioned at all, uh, in the part there where to contact for a motel and all that, none of our motels are mentioned whatsoever. Now, there's, there's a rub on this in the, in the sense that she, I talked to Karen Walker, I talked to.
Oh, so you did talk to Karen since then, since you talked to her?
I talked to her last night.
Okay.
I talked to Daphne Spradlin last night, I talked to Karen, I talked to Alan, um, talked to Ann Jackson.
Who's Alan?
Alan, um, he does media and stuff.
That's all right, it'll come to you, go on.
Oh, he's, he does all the advertising and things like that for him, and he's out of Springfield and, who am I talking about? Alan's, I want to say Spears, but that's not it.
Stern.
Who?
Is it Stern?
I don't think it's Sterns. It's something like that.
Okay, so you've talked to several people.
Several people, and, you know, why we weren't included on this, okay. Uh, here we go again, you know, she, she being Karen Walker is trying to really say, you know, I will, I, she, she followed the rules, she, you know, sent in an application. She's got it right there. We approved it and all that. We haven't issued the check because the check is laying in the thing there tonight to be paid, or, you know, for us to authorize the payment on it and all that. And nobody contacted her and said that we had approved this. Well, again, if, if I was involved in this, I would have been calling somebody on Friday, the day after this meeting, saying, did I get approved? Or did I not, or what's going on, or what's happening here? And we've always give money to them in the past, so going by past experience, I think she, she assumed or realized that. But the problem is, we didn't get any recognition. Now, it may not seem much to you guys, but it means a lot to me that we didn't get any recognition for a thousand dollars that we donated.
Well, that actually is a violation of our tourism ordinance, because you've got to have the advertising of our hotels in there for a hotel stay.
Now, on this application, it says something to the effect, and I read it briefly here, but it will be in the Jacksonville Journal Courier. It is my opinion that Facebook has more readership than the Journal Courier has.
That's true.
I don't know if it's true or not, but that's my opinion, so.
I would think we should have been included in all the advertising.
She was made aware that we were going to go through this because Perry sent her an email that we'd be happy to help, happy to.
I do.
Yes, so she was informed.
She asked how to go about it, and I said, all right, just, just send the application in and we'll approve it and we'll get the money. We originally talked about seven fifty.
And in fact, we even upped it from seven fifty, based on two fifty a motel, from a four motel to a thousand dollars.
So you're saying they left us off of the first advertising?
Yeah.
They left us off of, and, and they ran a little ad in there, you know, it's like you would make a comment on Facebook and something to the effect, um, South Jacksonville Motels, if I remember right, was omitted from being a sponsor in this, and some, you know, we apologized, nobody signed it. Nobody did anything, it's just, it's in there, you know, I could have put that in there.
Well, I have a problem with that, because if that came through our tourism grant application process, then that should be tourism money, and that money is a restricted account. So if they did not put us in the ad, then I have a problem with that.
Me too.
I don't know how you rectify it.
I would imagine we don't approve the check to be.
Yeah, that's just, that would be my recommendation, because either they follow the procedure, or no, that's why we went through all this trip to get the tourism grant.
Alan Starr, Stare, Starr, I'm sorry.
It's Stare, Alan's Stare. But it's S.T.A.R.E., yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
He's a Jacksonville resident, but.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now.
I mean, I don't know how we can approve it, because it's not technically tourism money, because they run the ad and we weren't in it.
Isn't there still a print handle, and I, I don't want to say.
It, it was mentioned in that, read it, if you would, read that, please.
But it says right here, no, 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 participants also will, as prospects, also advertisement in newspaper. Pretty much, approximately, yeah, that's it.
Now, I think it's a good deal. I think, I think the Rotary does a wonderful job of what they do. They put a lot of money back in the community, they sponsor a lot of things, you know, and this is something that should have never happened, but this is something that, well, I thought you did, you know, I thought you did, and all this, you know. And I think we really need to learn from these mistakes to have it more concrete as to what we expect out of them and what they expected, expect out of us, you know. I think it's, it's pretty harsh to say we're going to pull the thousand dollars away. It was my impression last night, after gobbling a few blood pressure pills, that hell yes, I was going to pull the plug and everything else, you know, but I don't, I don't, I don't know that, I really don't.
My recommendation would be to pay the thousand dollars and see if they can maybe post something on the Facebook page and ma- do something to make it work for them.
But I think they damn well need to be notified and known that they, they run the chance of losing this thousand dollars tonight over either our mistake or their mistake, but I'm not required.
Have you told them that they would be, that we were sponsoring it, and they still left us off?
Yeah, because I mean, right there in the email, it says right to her, Perry says, we'll be more than happy.
Then I take that as that's their mistake, not our mistake, and I go back to, we've got to be responsible for that tourism money. I don't care if it's a dollar or a thousand dollars.
They didn't mention restricted or nothing, so, yeah.
I mean, you can vote to pay for it out of general fund, but I wouldn't pay for it out of tourism. It's restricted for a reason.
Yeah.
Just my opinion.
We've never had this with Farmers then before.
No, and Karen always, I mean, she's.
Yeah, last year, yeah, very.
Yeah.
I think it's one of these things we're assuming, you know.
Yeah.
So did she explicitly say, we left you off because we didn't get a check yet?
That was inferred to me. That's the way I read that, that she didn't have a check in her hand, and thus, the, those people that are listed as sponsors, you want to add and look.
Yeah.
Those people supposedly have all paid, according to her.
She knows, she's been through this, this before, she knows how this works. I mean, last year we did it the same way.
The reason why I ask is if she was saying, you're not on there because we didn't get a check, but she knows our process, then she just doesn't get to get a check.
There you go.
That, that's my opinion.
I, yeah.
Um, and no, nobody inquired, uh, you know, I, I would say the next Tuesday or something, if I think somebody should be calling me for a thousand dollars, I'd call them. Maybe not the next day, but I'd have told them something. Yeah, I mean.
When you're putting your ad together, you look at your sponsors and say, I haven't heard from the villages out of Jacksonville, I'm going to call them and see where their check is.
You know, I, I think, you know, if we really made a mistake, I, I would say we should take responsibility for it, but I think we did what we always do with anybody. I mean, we didn't treat them any different.
There's a process for a reason.
Yeah, and we followed our steps, and if they got off on their own for some reason, ignoring the steps that they've always done with us, then that's not really our responsibility.
I don't feel it was our responsibility to call them and say, hey, you, we gave you a thousand dollars.
Now, if you guys still want to support the, the event and give a thousand out of general fund, I'm for that, but I'm not going to vote for tourism.
Well, I think that sends a bad message.
Do you think?
Because they would send a message to anybody else that, um, they can just do whatever they feel like regarding the procedures we've set up.
It just makes me feel bad, because the village is usually very generous. We try to give to events, and I, I hate that, that. But you're right, there's a process for a reason, and I guess that would send a bad message.
But my thought on that process, and I'm not trying to be, uh, communication is a big deal, I understand that, but when we approve these things, we approve them in a public meeting, and if it was my organization, and I've been on that end, I've been part of nonprofits before, and when I'm on that end and I've got that thousand-dollar application in, I'm there in the audience when they approve it and go, hey, we just got approved for our thousand-dollar application, and if they're not here and they don't know that they got approved, and then they're waiting on the check, and that's, that's my thought.
They weren't here on the seventh, and they aren't here tonight.
Yeah.
Nope.
So. But again, I you guys will have it for vote later.
Yeah.
There you go.
But again, now, that's a, paying it, I don't know, I could see paying it and then going from there. It'd, it'd be in the accounts payables, because the, the grant was already approved, so.
Okay, gotcha, alright.
Alright, we'll motion to adjourn this meeting and we'll go into our.
So moved.
Board meeting?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.